Diamond Lake School District 76, roll call please.
Ms. Agarola, here, she's Baylet, here, Mr. Becker.
Here.
Ms. Hale.
Here.
Mr. Hauptman, Mr. Cundella, Ms. Sullivan.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? Okay, there being no public comments, we will move on to presentations.
All right, we have two very exciting presentations this evening. We're going to start out with our Diamond Awards. For the audience, welcome. Our Diamond Awards are given when a staff member or an administrator nominates a staff member or a colleague for going above and beyond and exemplifying our Sparkle On qualities, which are service, passion, advocacy, respect, kindness, love, equity, opportunity, and nurture. Tonight, we are recognizing two staff members. One was recognized by a colleague and the other was recognized by her principal. So I'm going to have Ms. Nicole Lynch come up to the podium, please, who is recognizing and giving an award to Ms. Kay Roth for a Diamond Award. Nicole, welcome.
As our beloved Chicago icon Oprah Winfrey once said, "Education is the key to unlocking the world, a passport to freedom." I would argue that there is nothing so empowering and freeing as providing our children with the gifts that an education bestows. So today, I'd like to take the time to honor my colleague and friend Katie Roth for her dedication to the D76 ideal that education should be equitable and accessible for all. Katie has always found a way to connect with her newcomer students regardless of linguistic challenges. As a middle school language arts teacher, she continuously seeks out ways to make the curriculum accessible for our multilingual students. She is an avid enthusiast of technology and incorporates written translations of texts, captioning Google tools to translate assignments of students' work, as well as utilizing other technological resources to maintain contact and connection beyond the school with our multilingual parents. In addition to exploring technological resources, Katie also utilizes human assets to support our bilingual students, whether it be by collaborating with our bilingual teachers or with our bilingual learning associates. Similarly, Katie encourages students to support each other with translinguaging whenever possible to ensure that peers are able to support one another and offer adequate language supports. That is to say, Katie refuses to let language be an impediment to learning. She explores all opportunities to ensure our multilingual students access to learning. Katie's belief in equity for all is abundantly evident. And now, I'd like to share an anecdote that exemplifies Katie's commitment to equity in education for multilingual. Nowhere was her longstanding conviction to equity more apparent than during this past month with the recent arrival of a new middle school student. This young man had limited schooling in his home country and thus disposed of significantly limited literacy skills in his native language as well. Not only was he new to the English language, the country, and to schooling in general, but he struggled with the additional challenge of significant learning gaps, even in his home language. What was there to do with this young man confronting so many different challenges upon arriving to West Oak Middle School? Translating the content into writing was to no avail, nor could he communicate himself in writing. How was an English-speaking, seventh-grade language arts teacher supposed to teach literature to this young man? A lesser teacher might have given up or even resigned herself to the status quo. A less dedicated teacher might have relied on students or staff to orally translate as much as possible, but not Katie Roth. Katie Roth wanted to ensure that this young man had access to all the learning opportunities of his peers. This boy was not to miss a minute of instruction regardless of the constraints and limitations presented by his circumstances. And so, being a technically savvy teacher with a passion for equity, Katie began consulting with our technology director, Eric Hanson. Before long, thanks to their collaboration, Katie had discovered a way to have this young man's Chromebook switched into Spanish and to have everything read aloud to him in his native language. And yet, another obstacle presented itself. How to protect this young man's self-esteem so that his peers would be unaware of his literacy gaps? Katie solved this dilemma as well. She provided him with headphones so that he could privately access the content, thus showing both ingenuity as well as great compassion and empathy for his social emotional well-being. And still, she was not done. Katie next dedicated the time to privately coach our newcomer student on the requisite technology in order to ensure that he was able to capitalize on this new learning opportunity. She supported this young man with limited native literacy and a non-existent English language background in every way possible. Katie's compassion, intelligence, and determination has set the stage for this child to meaningfully engage in learning. In her desire for equity, she has granted him far greater access to learning. Thanks to Katie, this young man is one step closer to Oprah's mantra of possessing the key to unlocking the world, a passport to freedom. Today, I salute Katie Roth for exemplifying our District 76 core value of equity. I recognize her efforts and all that she endeavors to teach our numerous West Oak Middle School students day in and day out, but most especially for her recent dedication to this young man. I have no doubt that Katie has truly made a difference in his life and in the lives of countless others.
I have no words to say. I think she said all of them and more. That was incredibly kind, Nicole. Thank you so very much. Honestly, all I thought I was doing was mixing my love for teaching and for all of my students and the desire for learning mixed with technology. I knew I made a difference, but sometimes it comes totally without having my colleagues there to help support me in supporting my students. I wouldn't be there to offer that support to my students. So thank you for always being there, Nicole, and all my other friends. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. That was a great speech and a great anecdote. It's going to be hard to follow. But I get to present on somebody who is just a wonderful and staple member of our school community. So I'm very excited to introduce you all to Barb Kosick. This is my first year meeting Barb, but she is truly just a gem or a diamond, if you will. I've had the opportunity to, it's hard to find just one of the Sparkle On qualities that exemplifies Barb. She's a catalyst for success at West Oak Intermediate School. Anytime she's needed, she jumps in and then some. She's taken on subbing positions. She's taken on long-term positions. She's kept growth alive in our school even when some of our teachers needed to take some time. She has relationships with all students in all classrooms, and she is truly just a jack of all trades. Anytime Ms. Melgoza, Elizabeth needs someone to help out, or we need somebody to help out in a pinch, she is there. She organizes our LA meetings to make sure everybody is on the same page, and she's just a ray of sunshine around the classroom committee. This year, Barb has taken on a myriad of subbing opportunities. In addition to her LA responsibilities, we've had to adjust some of our subbing opportunities, and we have our flex periods that she's jumped into and really enriched the education of our students in those roles and make sure that their learning is continuing. Barb is a kind and empathetic person. She truly cares about the well-being of all students and holds them accountable to high expectations. She has been with our school district for a long while. It's important to understand and know what an integral part that she plays in the success of our students here at the school. She is truly an embodiment of all the Sparkle On characteristics, and I'm so proud to work at the same school that she works at. So Ms. Kosick, thank you so much for all you do, and come on up and get your Diamond.
She said, "Do I have to say something?" And I said, "No, you don't."
But thank you very much.
Congratulations, Barb.
Thank you.
As you know, we have truly amazing staff members dedicated their entire lives to just making the lives of our students better and making such a positive impact. So thank you, Katie. Thank you, Barb. Thank you, Nicole, for some great words. And thank you, Mr. Freiberger. I'm going to have Mr. Freiberger come back because we have a West Oak Intermediate School Student Learning Spotlight. I'm very excited that they invited me to participate with this awesome T-shirt. So congratulations and thank you and welcome, Girls Who Code and the West Oak Intermediate School Student Council. I'm sure we're going to be hearing from you very soon. Mr. Freiberger, come on up. Oh, and then, Mrs. Roth and Mrs. Kosick, if you don't mind waiting a few minutes after the presentation, Mr. Hanson will take your pictures. Or unless you want to do it now. You can do it now. You can do it now. Whatever works.
Yeah, whatever works.
So way back last year, last summer, we had a pretty exciting mandate to, and I know it's one that we all shared as a team, but to take a larger look at, or a look at the larger picture of who students are as a whole learner, something that I am truly passionate about as well and something that I get a chance to present on here tonight. So tonight's presentation is called "Woeis Student Learning Update: Advocacy and Leadership and How It Impacts Our Learning at Woeis." So, can I do the next slide? Oh, I have the, so much power. Okay. So what are we here for? We're here to reflect on this mandate of a larger picture. Tonight, we'll be focusing on the student target portfolios and how it helps us understand each child by name, strength, and need. So our learners here that are here tonight all impacted their community in a massive way. And I'm so excited to get to their presentation, so I'm going to go quickly here. With our student target portfolio, we wanted to really hone in on what their specific strengths were, what their family said about them was a strength, strengths that they had in their community, strengths that they had in their own culture, and their ways of being, knowing, and learning. So we wanted to highlight those things in the student target portfolio, and that really enhanced the students' and their desire to join these committees. So our SIP goals, priority one, it was related to academic excellence. We wanted all of our students to grow. As you know, the goal of our district here is that 100% of students would grow at least on their STAR test. We wanted to attach that metric and say that 100% of students would grow in their FNP so that we could attach that then to our learning goals and priorities and that they would be within grade level. The big priority or the big attachment that we're going to talk about tonight is operational excellence and cognitively complex task. So it is a truly cognitively complex task to understand what a student's strengths are and understand just beyond academics and beyond the common core, what they can offer to their world. So we'll be focusing on the student target portfolios there, that 100% of students would have a student target portfolio containing a personal and academic strength, and then exemplars of it lays to priority standards. Tonight, we're going to be talking more about that, and I'm going to get to it. So without further ado, I'm going to bring up these wonderful students. They're representing Women in STEAM, which is a high area of need. They're representing what it looks like to be true service learners and take on take on a mandate for impact around the community and just bringing the West Oak name around Mundeline and really just countrywide as well because it is a nationally renowned program. So come on up, you guys. All right, we got the student council first. So I'm going to introduce Ms. Berman and Ms. Brodsky.
Hi, everyone. We have some student council representatives from fourth and fifth grade here to tell you a little bit more about our club.
Hi, we are Student Council Club at West Oak Intermediate School. Thank you for inviting us to attend this board meeting. We have prepared a slideshow to show you what we do in our club and how we have positively impacted our school and community.
Halloween candy collecting. We donated an extra Halloween candy to people that didn't to people that didn't get to have it. We donated four big boxes, 60 pounds of Halloween candy, which is a huge donation. We are happy to show what we have donated Halloween candy to people in places like Wings, the troops, and several different food pantries in Mundine, Vernon Hills, and Buffalo Cove.
We've made holiday cards for a place called Brookdale in Vernon Hills. These cards help the residents feel happy and loved. We are planning to go to Brookdale in May to read books and play bingo with the residents.
Blankets for Orphans of the Storm. We made blankets for the dogs and cats at Orphans of the Storm located in the mall in Vernon Hills. Dr. Sharma Lewis even came to help us make blankets. We made these for the animals that live at the shelter.
We thought that making blankets for the animals for winter would help them stay nice and warm. All of the blankets have been sent on Super Bowl Sunday at the mall. If you go there, you might see some of the blankets we made.
Eat My Striving Children is about making food for starving children. The food is donated to all different parts of the world where food is needed. The order of the food is vitamins, veggies, soy, and then rice. After you put in the ingredients, you wait and add or remove rice.
After that, you seal the bag and put it in the box. Thirty-six bags are needed to fill one box. When the box gets filled, we would cheer so volunteers could collect the box, and we can begin filling another box.
Student Store. The money benefits our school in many ways.
Student Council Fund. This fund is used to help us go on field trips, donate money to help around our community, and to have cool experiences.
The students in Student Council get to help decide what to do with some of the money each year.
How this impacted my learning. Student Council made an impact in my life by letting me meet other people in different grades. Student Council helped me with working with different people and using teamwork. Thank you.
Student Council has helped me know that I could be a leader. We get to tell important news to people. We have the Student Store, and we help other communities members by making food and blankets for people and animals.
It has made my life a more positive one.
It has made me a better person and made me want to learn more.
Thank you so much. We hope you enjoyed our presentation.
So thank you to the first part of our presentation. I'll do a brief outro as they come up, but I do want to introduce our esteemed Girls Who Code Club. They've been working tirelessly all year long. They actually put on a couple of events for our school, and we're here to represent Women in STEAM. Come on up, you guys.
Girls Who Code is a club of girls that code. Girls Who Code is a club for learning about technology. Girls Who Code is a program for young girls to learn how to code. Girls Who Code is an amazing experience for all girls who want to learn about coding and how to, how coding processes work. During Girls Who Code, we eat snacks, we learn about different vocabulary, and learn about technology.
I'm getting nervous. Specific, specific to coding, we go on Scratch to practice coding, and we've learned about women in the field of coding.
We learned to code with Scratch. We used AI to write music with GirlJams, and we made movies and presentations with Canva. So on your left is a picture of GirlJams, and on your right is a picture of Scratch.
Separating our knowledge. We build robots that use a station in the STEAM Olympics. We planned the STEAM Olympics. We decided on fun activities that students could rotate through. Girls Who Code worked very hard to make flyers, and we got our school excited. Our impact using Canva to art advise, advertise, these are some examples of people, these are some examples of who we are and what we do. During the STEAM Olympics, STEAM Olympics, during the STEAM Olympics, we split up into five groups. The first group was in the art room. We made a handmade robot that draws. It shows that we had to work together, and if we did not, it would not work.
We can use Girls Who Code in the future by knowing how to collaborate with each other. People sit in life, in life.
In life, you'll need to know how. If you don't, it'll be hard talking to other people. We can use GWC in another way by knowing more about technology and how we use it to do amazing coding activities. Girls Who Code is also knowing the process and how to use electronics too.
This is how Girls Who Code impacts my learning.
Oh my goodness, I have so many things to share. These girls, this has been our second year, and they surprise us more every time we meet. Anything from asking them to do flyers, to plan an event, anything technology-based, anything to look something up, they just always seem to, you know, raise the bar for us. I just wanted to share that I feel privileged. I feel excited to be part of their group. And I also wanted to share that this weekend or this last weekend, we were at the Mayor's Cup Challenge, and I just wanted to say again, Diamond Lake, just the school, the community, the students, we had fifth graders beat high schoolers in a challenge. And it was just an amazing feeling to know that we provide those opportunities for our students. So I just want to say thank you to the parents and thank you to the board, and thank you to all of the administration that continues to support technology and everything that comes with it. So thank you.
Oh, we want to do it. Girls Who Code makes, oh, we can do that better. Girls Who That was like a dance we invented in the hallway, so maybe not everybody knows it quite yet, but you will. It's really easy to figure out. It's just a repeat of Girls Who Code mixed waves. Okay. So let's do a reflective audit. Have we truly enriched the lives of our students this year? Well, I think yes. We have impacted our community in multiple ways. So thank you to the student council for reaching out and finding opportunities to spread love and spread care. And truly, it takes a lot of logistics to do what you do and to spread that care into the community. The Girls Who Code put on an entire day's worth of events and had 200-plus students and staff moving, invited even a staff member's husband to come and lead a station, gave them inquiry-based questioning, and made sure that everyone was in the right place and at the right time. I do want to recognize Ms. Katie Levy, who is also a part of the Girls Who Code and one of the leaders there. She cannot be here tonight, but she is a massive part of the Girls Who Code as well. So it does take a lot of learning and logistics beyond just what they have impacted our community with. So we know that our students have a wide range of strengths that our teachers and students have represented and created a platform for girls and women within STEAM, which is a huge need for our world. Eric, soon, hopefully, you'll have some of these girls on your team as we go through. And then Ms. Calderon might have the services of some of our student council, and I hope you guys take these skills into middle school, high school, college, career, trades, everything. So we know that they've fulfilled and are fulfilling a huge need in our world, and our students have built on their own definition of what it means to be self-reliant, empathetic. on their own definition of what it means to be self-reliant, empathetic, charismatic, and successful members of their community, ready and willing to impact their world, which is what we strive for every single day. I am so proud to be your principal. So thank you so much for presenting. Well, they can answer. Any questions and feedback for the group? Guessing come back up here.
How many of you guys have a lot of fun doing all this coding and helping the community and going out? Most of you have a lot of fun. That's, so you are doing so much and you're also having fun while you're doing it. So I am so, and I know all of us are so proud of you, and you should be really proud of yourselves for all that you're doing and how you're growing and learning and helping the community and helping yourself. I have a feeling you guys are going to be doing some amazing things in the future and having fun while you're doing it. So thank you so much for that.
Students also, none of the student council opportunities that you did or the Girls Who Code activities would be done without the sponsors. So I hope you all students take a minute or two to thank, maybe not right now, but thank Ms. Gomez, thank Ms. Levy, thank the student council sponsors, because if they didn't devote their time, you wouldn't have been able to do all the amazing things. So the four of you, I know Ms. Levy is the fourth, thank you for all your time and energy.
There are no more questions. I just want to thank you guys one more. And students, if you understand how much bravery it takes to get up in front of the board and present and push through and persevere and volunteer and be excited about doing it and coming here. Thank you families for coming here at seven o'clock on a school night. Truly, truly appreciate it. It's my life and the life of the board here and people watching online. So thank you guys so much.
Well, one thing I'd just like to say, thank you, Mr. Freiberger, for coordinating all this. I know you all practiced. It was very obvious, and I know how much time it took. Um, I just want to say one of the things that you were here for was the Diamond Awards and that we have the sparkle on. It's not just something that we say, but it's just something that we believe in. It's our mindset and it's our core values. All of you as students, student council, and Girls Who Code represent our brand every single day when you're out there representing Diamond Lake, West Oak Intermediate School, our entire district, and our communities, your families and your friends, and you've just done such a great job and we are so proud of you. So thank you for always sparkling on. We really appreciate it. And thank you, Mrs. Gomez, Mrs. Berman, and Mrs. Brodsky and Mrs. Levy from afar. So we appreciate your leadership and support. Thank you, Mr. Freiberger, and thank you board for all of your support. Appreciate it. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you. Thank you families for coming tonight. You are welcome to walk out with your students and take them home.
Okay. We will now move on to our business agenda for the evening. The first item on the business agenda is approving the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board member, staff administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda items A through D as listed. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Becker? Ms. Angarola? Ms. Bayless? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Cundella?
Yes.
That motion is approved. The next item up for action on the business agenda this evening is personnel. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have five new hires, three internal reassignments, two resignations, two non-renewals, and one maternity leave. May I have a motion to approve, please? Second.
Mr. Cundella?
Yes.
Ms. Bayless?
Yes.
Ms. Angarola?
Yes.
Ms. Bayless?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
That motion is also approved. The next item on the business agenda is just for review, and that's a review of the leases with American Capital Lease for the Chromebooks. I don't know if, um, Mr. Hanson or Mr. Rogers, you want to talk about that at all?
Yeah, this is just an item that we're, uh, whenever we enter in a new lease agreement, we have to present it to the board, but this is for the new Chromebook adoption. I know Mr. Hanson has this on his IT obsolescence plan that we review regularly, and now the proposal is to renew the Dell Chromebooks for another three-year cycle.
May I ask a quick question about that? Um, so do students keep their same Chromebooks like throughout? Like how long do they typically have their Chromebooks or like when they're renewed, do they bring in new ones or kind of how does that work?
Perfect question. Absolutely. Excited to answer. Um, so we lease our Chromebooks on a three-year cycle because generally it's the longevity of each device. Because of that, because we want to make sure that we service each device, uh, our standard plan is that we issue out the device at the end of the year, collect them at the end of the year. Uh, my team will go through each device, resolve any sort of issues that could happen that hasn't been reported, and then we'll redistribute at the start of each year. It's always been very beneficial, especially the fact that we have some families that leave district who want to make sure that we have all the devices on, on premise. And we want to make sure we keep to that three-year obsolescence plan and cycle because generally the longevity of a Chromebook, we try to keep it within a good window to make sure we have a, an appropriate device that's ready for all of our students.
Yeah, I'll add one clarification too. The difference between the Chromebook lease and the teacher device lease, uh, the MacBook lease that we have, is the Chromebooks, we return them at the end of the lease terms because they, they have relatively no value. So we pay less than interest costs and, um, we just return them so they get to recoup some of that value. Whereas the MacBooks, we keep them and then we decide to resell them and we're able to recoup, you know, anywhere, usually thirty thousand, forty thousand of those devices when it's done.
Great. Does anyone have any other questions? Okay, that wraps up the business agenda. Uh, moving on to board discussion. Mr. Rogers, do you want to walk us through the summer project updates?
Yeah, so we've already signed off on two large-scale projects. That's the West Oak Campus parking lot replacement and then the building automation system, uh, upgrade at Diamond Lake. This is a project that we're doing internally and all these projects are utilizing either purchasing cooperatives or it's below our purchasing threshold. So I just wanted to provide an update on, uh, the band. I'll call the band course an art wing. It's the only area we really didn't do much facility work on the last time around. We replaced some ceiling. We did some HVAC work there. But the flooring's still original. A lot of the equipment's still original. And, um, as the memo kind of explains, we made a large investment in our band, uh, equipment over the last three or four years. So what this would do is provide, uh, uh, modern casework. It's got all the different instruments stored. So the tuba goes here and flute goes here. So we've been working really diligently with, uh, uh, with Ms. Rosales and, uh, Mison and, um, Forkowski, just to make sure we communicate our needs and what, you know, each project is planned to be. So it's all, um, we're utilizing kind of the lowest cost design work here and may, and we're able to do all this in-house in terms of, you know, the bidding and the design work. It's working closely with, uh, Dr. Sharma from the lowest to make, pick out colors and all this kind of stuff. So, um, we think it's a worthwhile investment in one of our, our core, on-core programs.
Great. Does anyone have any questions?
I think having so many students participate in band, fifth grade even through the eighth grade, that, that's a really great investment to have a solid room where they can practice and succeed. So I'm really glad that we're spending that time and money doing it and all your hard work and pricing it out and dealing with all the vendors and stuff. So thank you.
Great. Okay, um, moving on to freedom of information requests. We had nine notices and communications. We have the D Seventy-Six highlights, um, with the sparkle spotlight, the new Welcome to D Seventy-Six video, and an episode of the Diamond Dish. And then we also have, um, sparkle on grant winner, grant winner summary.
Yes, sure. Yes, thank you. Um, we just wanted to share with the board that a few months ago, we received a private donation from the families, from the family who usually makes a large donation to our school district, and they've been very generous and gracious, and they allowed us to, um, use our creativity and how we wanted to do it. So this year, we decided to do it a little bit differently since it was a large amount, um, is put out an application. And what is it throughout the district that students or staff need to strengthen and enhance engagement and, um, student growth? And so they had to, again, we're trying to really instill the sparkle on qualities. What qualities are definitely going to be strengthened and emphasized during, um, these purchases and what are the outcomes for student learning? So as you can see, Mr. Hanson put a very nice graphic together of all the different, um, projects that have been funded through this grant. And so it goes from the fine arts to music to Girls Who Code that you heard of, uh, that you heard from tonight. Of course, we can't forget our beautiful Princess Polly, who is accepting the awards so well tonight, right here in front of us. And this visualizing and verbalizing program, that's one of the things that the music teachers have asked for. So it's just, um, scorer's table for sports. So it just, it really spreads this, this generous grant spread throughout the entire district, impacts all of our students, the majority of our staff in so many different ways. And I know Mr. Freiber talked about that holistic approach, and this grant definitely targets all of that. So we just, we wanted to share that with you. We're going to send the family, uh, a letter of appreciation and gratitude, but then also share with them all the things that their generous donation provided for our school. So we just wanted to share that with you. This will also go out to our staff tomorrow. Winners have been notified, um, and they've been working with the district office, Eric and Eric, um, with their staff to order these things. So it's been great. And thank you principals for your support with that. So I just wanted to share that with you all.
That's great. It's nice to see how diverse it is.
Yeah, awesome.
It'll really impact a lot of kids. Okay, um, moving on to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Uh, it looks like we do not have any of those. Then moving on to others. Tomorrow night, Stevenson is having an event for the feeder school wards to talk about kind of collaboration like, um, District One Twenty does. I just wanted to show who is planning to attend that. Yeah, it's at five o'clock. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay, I will see you there. And then you have the, um, end of the year party is May seventeenth.
Yeah, just a reminder, I think most of you have RSVP'd, but just an FYI and keep it on your calendar. We're looking forward to it. It's going to be here before we know it. So, May is next week.
That is shocking.
I know.
Okay, um, then we will move to executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity, and for collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session, please? Yes. Great. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Matt, nice job. They did so.